Chairman, we rely.
Okay, welcome everybody. Today is Monday, April 3rd. It's our weekly county commissioner meeting. At this time, I please ask everyone rise to say the pledge. Mike, would you mind leading us?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mike, for doing that. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda. Oh, yeah. An entertaining motion to approve unless there's any changes. Make a motion to approve the agenda.
One second.
One second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And we'll get right on into our agenda. Morning, Joanna. Our first agenda item is an action item. This is the meeting minutes of March 27th. You got my comments?
Yes, sir.
Everybody good with those?
I sent in my comments also, so I would know that we approve the meeting minutes of March 27th as amended.
Second?
Seconded.
What's that? See? If you gave me a motion, a second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we'll move right on down the list. This is also an action item. This is discussion on the maturity ARPA dollars. Here's your Joanna, come on up. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. This is just a repeat of what we talked about last month. We have a million five maturing tomorrow. And I am wondering if you would like me to reinvest this for another five months out, or if you'd like me to hold it in an account to keep it more flexible.
Do you think we have any need for that for five months?
We still have 500 in there, right?
We have about 300 in there, is what I held out.
So we might want to pull a little bit back out and put that up to half a million, maybe, that we don't have invested.
Yep.
And do the rest.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
You got another 30, or another million coming in 30 days?
Yep, on May 4th.
And did you get over 5% yet?
Not over 5%. So the highest yield, they sent me a bunch of options this morning. The highest yield is 4.693.
4.693.
Yep. And that's actually, that's not on a treasury note. That's on a grouping of federal home mortgage loans, which is another investment that we are able to make as accounting. With these ARPA dollars, I've been trying to stay with the treasury notes and treasury bills. And so the highest yield on a treasury bill currently is 4.632.
Perfect. I think we take and put some in, because I know the fair board needs some immediately. That'll give us a little bit more to...
Yeah.
So what do you think about 1.2 million, million and a quarter into this, and then put the rest in cash ready?
So we have a million five maturing, and I have 300,000 in the LGIP account and 41,000 in the bank account. So what I could do is I could pull 200,000 out of this maturity and put it into the LGIP, so we'd have 500,000 sitting in there, and then reinvest the 800. Is that what you'd like me to do?
You said you had 1.5.
100, or, excuse me, 1,005,000.
Oh, 5,000.
Got it.
A smaller amount. I'm sorry, I did say that. That was incorrect. 1,005,000 is maturing.
Now we take 200 and put the LGIP. That still gives us...
You make that a motion.
Yes, I move that we go ahead and reinvest out of the 1.05 million, take 200 and put it into the LGIP, and leave that as liquid cash and invest the difference.
I don't think they're going to have bids on the reindeer until we get rid of some snow, really see what they're up against.
If they have to pay for anything upfront, if there's a down payment or anything else...
Okay. One second. Move the second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great day. Okay, our next agenda item is an action item. This is discussion, completing the trademark process for the Valley County logo. I don't know anything about that. I don't either.
That would be me.
I know you wanted to do it, because somebody was copying this web page or some...
Yeah, there's been use of our logo. McCall Chamber just went through this, and they went ahead and trademarked it. McKenzie said that, you know, it's a best practice to do that when you have something that's been specifically designed for our use. And so she actually has the ability to do this, and I think that if we go ahead and let McKenzie go through the trademarking, then people do have to ask for our privilege in order to use our logo. This is the Valley County's identification to the community.
So is there, like, a small cost, I'm assuming?
I'm sure that there will be a little bit.
Some filing fee or something?
Yeah.
I think it makes sense. I don't like people using our stuff for other nefarious reasons. I always wanted to use that word nefarious. I like it.
Whether nefarious or not, honestly, I mean, people, like when they're sponsoring an event. If we don't have it trademarked, then, I mean, people could use our logo and say we're supporting something when we're not.
Yeah.
I mean, they, anybody could have a public event, maybe something that we would not approve of, would not, you know, support.
Throw our name on it.
And they could put our name on it without that trademark logo, so it's just a best practice to do this.
So, just to add my two cents, you, once you, once you have used your mark in, in the marketplace, you have what's called a common law trademark protections. And so I'm not trying to talk you out of registering with federal, with federal patented trademark office. That gives you nationwide protection for your trademark. But if you're aware of somebody using your mark, you have an obligation to defend it. So under the common law trademark, it might be a good idea to send a cease and desist letter to that extent, in addition to registering your trademark as well.
I was wondering if the letter wouldn't work, or email or something, saying you guys can't do that. But I think we should still go ahead and do it. I just wonder how many other Valley Counties there are in the United States.
Probably a few, but your mark's unique. You're going to have something that's going to be specific to this. And the standard, the standard is, is it going to cause confusion as to who the messenger is behind the message? And if they're using your mark and saying their message, it could confuse the reader as to whether or not that's a county message or somebody else. Now, I've seen what's on the Facebook page, they've kind of overlaid, I think it says satire and parody over the top of the trademark. So, you know, there could be a little bit of a dispute over whether it will cause confusion to the reader. But it is still best practice to protect your mark, because if you don't, then you lose whatever protections you have. So the trademark is valuable to the county. We want to protect that from the standpoint of being able to, being able to ensure that the message is clear, who the sender is. So at the risk of, of one more project for me to work on, I'll add that to the list of, of crafting a letter for your consideration and get it in front of you. But I think, again, good idea to have McKenzie work with getting the registration done with the PTO.
Then I'm assuming you would do your letter as an action item and approve it.
Yeah. Yeah, and what would, what you would need to change, once you do get that, secure that registration, is that you put that mark, that trademark symbol on, on the mark itself, so people know that is a trademarked symbol and it can't be used for any other purpose.
I did put out there that that was not legal, to use the county's logo. Was told that it is legal. So that is obviously a...
Yeah. I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of, maybe, but you can, you can, you can get left of center on a lot of stuff that you read on the internet, so...
Okay. As I was going, I don't say this is legal, but in the past, I know that we've done things, you know, I mean, the bank was pretty adamant that no one ever used their logos.
Right. You invest, right, you invest a lot in the mark, and you want to protect the integrity of the mark, so you can use it for, for your messaging purposes.
In a world of cyber...
Well, this is an action item, so we need a motion.
They don't care.
I would move that we move forward with completing a trademark for our Valley County logo and hire McKenzie Kramer, our PIO, to do that.
Second. Move the second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm just writing a note here that I'm going to write a desist letter and get it back to us when it's ready. Now we've got 12 minutes, so let's take a break, and we'll see everybody back here at 9:25. Get us back on, we'll be ready to go in just a second.
Yes, Chairman.
Okay, welcome back. We're at our 10, or 9:25 agenda item. This is an action item. This is an approved and external training agreement. Pat, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, I apologize.
No problem.
I thought it was later. So the short, the short story is that I went to a Human Resource Association of Treasure Valley meeting, and there was somebody that was doing micro-messaging, which is an awesome thing, talks about, you know, facial expressions and just different things, and they send out messages. So I thought it would be a really good opportunity if we could bring her here to do a training for all of our people that supervise others. And so we're planning that for May, and what I need is your approval to go forward.
When in May did you think, where you think...
You would ask me that. I, you know, you take, you take a day off and you can't remember anything.
One of the best trainings I ever had was on body language.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Well, it's very similar to that. I think we're doing it, I thought maybe the contract told us, but I'm not finding...
I didn't see it.
I don't either.
May 25th.
There it is.
May 25th.
Yep.
And this is going to be like mandatory attendance by electeds and department heads or everyone, or how are you planning that?
I, it would be nice for mandatory for supervisors, so that would be elected officials, chief... But, you know, it's, it's not the same as an active shooter or something like that, where it's a safety issue. So I will leave that up to you. I think it would be very helpful, helpful for anybody that supervises.
Highly recommended that everyone attend in a supervisory position. How's that sound?
Yep. That's what...
And you have this in your budget, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, and I like, sure, you've had training too on body language.
Yes.
And it's pretty interesting, the things you can pick up.
Yes. Just by facial expressions.
Okay, so what's your feeling on this? May 25th, what day is it?
I would move that we approve the external training for HR.
One second. So that is Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
And, let me call that week. I guess you'll let us know the time and the place.
Yeah, it'll probably, probably be at the ELC if it's available.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to approve this expense. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
That is the budget training workshop in the Riverside Hotel in Boise. Okay.
Oh.
I don't know if that will go, but...
No, I've been to lots of those. Yeah, May 25th.
Should go.
Same day.
Well...
I think Doug could train us just as well as that down there.
This is on the new legislation that just passed that might be interesting.
You going to that thing?
We are going to the training presented by the State Tax Commission on May 4th. Gabby and I will be attending that training.
I can see if we can change this training.
You guys want it? What do you want to do?
I don't know that I need to go down to that budget either, but...
It's kind of like BOE training. It's a lot of repetitive stuff that you get.
The only reason this one might be interesting is just because of the complexity of the new legislation. But Doug, again, will be our brain behind it, but I, I know that the Idaho Association of Counties was encouraging everyone to come because...
And I would recommend it to commissioners, if you can attend that, for sure.
Is Joanna going to go?
If you want us there, then...
I don't know. She is attending the one that you guys are referring to.
Well, I will reach out to Ann and see if we can find another day. Not the end of the world, we just put a pen in the...
Hey, Doug.
The directors would be here. I just don't know about the elected officials.
Memorial Day is on the 29th.
So...
29th?
Yes.
What's the 29th?
Memorial Day.
Oh, okay.
What I'm wondering, Pat, it's an hour-long presentation. We could do it after a commissioner meeting on Monday, in Raleigh. I don't know what the agendas are like in May, so...
Yeah, let me explain why I use Thursday, and that was because, based on the feedback that I got from people for the elite leaders, Thursday seemed to be better.
Good.
But having said that, it hasn't made any difference on my attendance at the meeting. So I don't think there's any one day that's better than the next. We usually stay away from Mondays because of the... because of the commissioner meeting. So, I can see if Ann is available on a Monday, we can push it to June if we need.
Then we'll just kind of leave the date and the time up to you, what you can settle with her, and we'll go from there.
Yep, and I'll try to find another pen to poke in the calendar, and we'll see where we go from there.
I think June works better.
You did?
May's trashed.
Second week in June is our commissioner convention in Moscow, so just keep that in mind.
You guys are just making this difficult.
It's so busy. Holy cow.
I will do what I can, let me.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea, and people will learn a lot from this.
Oh, they will. I just, when I went to the one at HRTV, there was a lot to learn. She's very interactive, so it will be really good. Awesome, thank you.
All right, thanks, keep us in the loop.
Will do.
Okay, we're gonna move on down to our next agenda item, and this is also an action item, this is a workshop with the assessor Sue Leeper. Come on up, you wanna stop the table, Sue?
Do we need anything? No?
Your opinion.
Kind words and sympathy.
Yeah, that too.
So, as everybody knows, every year we have, well, thanks Doug, an exemption list for property taxpayers that we have to approve, and there's a lot of different organizations on there. And, over the years, it's been kind of challenging, and I think Brian's got us an updated application form that's gonna solve a lot of our issues. But I will turn it over to Sue, see where we go.
Sorry. So, the purpose of this meeting is to make sure that we are implementing standard policies when looking at religious church camps and benevolent organizations. We all want to be operating under the rule of no surprises, we want complete transparency, and we want to be fair and equitable to everyone. So, Christie and I met with Mr. Oki last week, and during that meeting, he strongly suggested that we have a workshop with you guys, so we know, you know, what your thoughts are on the matter. You know, there's some gray area, and so, I believe that Mr. Oki can take over for the moment.
Sure. So, the, the purpose of the discussion here is not to talk about any one specific application or property. Those are pending hearings that will come before you later, and didn't want to have any type of ex parte type of conversation. So, we're just wanting to discuss in general what, what to expect coming up with the Board of Equalization, as well as, is make sure that this group is on the same page with the decisions that have to be made. So, of the, as you know, Valley County has a lot of church camp-type properties with religious exemption requests every year, and maybe fewer, but still a fair amount of charitable or benevolent organizations' applications for property tax exemption as well. Historically, those have been approved for, for exemption purposes last year before June left. The decision was made in the assessor's office to, to take a little bit closer look than maybe had been done in the past. And so, the application form has been developed to try to elicit a little bit more information, because the case law on these applications are pretty clear. Exempt status is, according to the statute, and according to the way that the courts have interpreted the statute in cases that have come before them, the statutes are to be, are to be interpreted very narrowly, meaning that exemptions aren't to be granted liberally, they have to be, meet with exacting standards, all of the qualifications, and for religious organizations as well as benevolent organizations, those properties have to be used exclusively for the purpose that they're asking for tax exempt status. So, a couple of things that we need to discuss and get some guidance on is, in the applications themselves, the, the property owners are, I would say, being very, the, the answers to their questions are very short and thin, and sometimes don't provide us with enough information to make an intelligent decision. And sometimes, those applications are inconsistent with what they're, what they've marketed their property for. So, we got really two issues. First is insufficient information for us to determine whether or not they qualify. My recommendation to the assessor's office is, if that's the case, then you should deny those applications with, with the message that if you want to supplement your application, or bring your additional information to the Board of Equalization and appeal from that initial decision, and you can supplement your application, that, you know, you may end up with, you may end up with an approval based on additional information supplied. So, if we're all in agreement with that, then we can, we can kind of move forward with that, with that plan. But, the second is, I, I think, a little bit more tricky, and I think this might just be a misunderstanding of what the expectation is with respect to how church camps are operated, or, it doesn't even have to be a church camp, we have scout camps and, you know, other organizations that have a charitable purpose in their 501(c)(3), but they use their camps for a few weeks out of the year, and then they are available for rent. And some of the applications say, well, we rent to other religious churches, or, and so, they perceive that as, is being used for a religious purpose. But if you look at their website, they're, a lot of them, I'm not saying any one in particular, but some of them are, make it available to, for rent to anybody. Doesn't have to be a church, it could be a family reunion, it could be what, you know, whatever, anybody that's willing to rent their camp and, and pay the money. So, here's, so here's kind of what the issue is. When they submit a profit and loss statement, for the most part, and, and I'm not disputing this, for the most part, it appears that in order to own and operate a camp, you have to generate some revenue to put back into that camp in order to keep that thing up and running. So, the question is, and there is no clear-cut black and white rule as far as case law goes on, if you're, if you are generating some rental income on the property and putting it back into the rental property to keep that, you know, pay somebody to be the maintenance person, or make sure the grass is mowed and watered, and things are up and running, is that going to meet the, is that gonna meet the criteria for the exemption? I will say that there's, there's one case out there, and, and it's kind of on point, it's kind of not, but it was related to the LDS Church Welfare Farm. So, we're not dealing with the church camp, but it's some, it's something similar where they, if you're familiar with how that organization operates, they, they own a lot of farm ground, and they farm wheat, they mill it in flour, they put that back into the warehouse, and they, and they use that, they use the flour and everything else that they, that they harvest for charitable purposes. They give it to needy families, and, and so, and so, they applied for tax exempt status on these farm acres. The Supreme Court in that case said, because the county denied the application for exemption, the Supreme Court in that case said, you are not, when, if you, if you take a narrow view of the statute, you're not looking at what the purpose of the product is, you're looking at what the use of the land is. And the use of the land was for farming, not for religious purposes. So, if you, so if you apply that logic to church camps that are putting their, their church properties out for rent, the, the next step out there is, well, if we're looking at the use of the land and not what the rental income is being used for, use of land is, is really landlord tenant, right, which, which can put you in one of two ways. I talked to Sue and Christie about that last week and said, well, I totally understand, I, I think this is kind of a blend of both a legal issue and a policy issue, which is why I'm looking for some discussion and some direction and guidance on this, because I think as a matter, as a practical matter, if, if a property owner is not able to generate some income and put it back into, and reinvest that back into the property, some of these properties may not continue to exist. And so, as a matter of policy, if, if your direction is that you would, you would be okay with and allow for rental income, as long as they can show that it's not being diverted for some other non-exempt purpose and being put back in, I'd be okay with that. But, but I need, I think we all, all need some guidance on where your head is on this issue.
I would think that, you know, I've been around some of that before, and they've struggled with that, and it's, they, they put it more into, this is gonna be a donation to this church camp, sort of a flat rent. That's the only way I can see of breaking that, what you're saying, renting it out to third party, to, for, you know, whatever. But if they did it with a setup, this is gonna be a donation to this church property, and you guys can use this. That changes that whole wording to where that money is going into a church facility, and church camp, whatever, and it's being used to take care of maintenance operation. They've gotta do it somehow.
The challenge, the challenge that I think we have is that a lot of these, well, I, I would say, the major, vast majority, if not all of them, their accounting is not to that level of, of detail.
Sure.
They'll show, they'll show rental income on the church camp, but then they won't be able to show that that wasn't somehow, I mean, that, just the, at least in the information that's being supplied to us at this point in time, there's no way to determine how much that income is being reinvested back into that property, or.
Or some.
Or the profitability of, right. Or the profitability of the camp may be very profitable, but the organization overall is not profitable, and they're, and they're showing a loss. And so, it's hard to differentiate, because I don't necessarily think they differentiate between the camp and the church and the other operations that they have throughout the state, which, which can present some challenges for us to making an informed decision about how to handle that.
I would have a concern.
Go ahead.
I just have concerns with it, just changing the verbiage to donation also, because to me, that's a direct opposite of, of taxes. I mean, all you're doing is changing the way you're wording it to try and avoid taxes, and I don't think that that should be a purpose or something that we would support. So, that would be my only concern with that, going that direction.
Well, and I really like this new form, because they're gonna have to be a lot more detailed. But the issue we've had ever since the beginning that I can remember is, we had different religious organizations that had service once a year, and it was only Christmas, and then that was it for the whole year, they didn't have a weekly. And to me, there's some, that's kind of thin. The other issue I have is, you may have a church camp that's, or any camp, it's 150 acres, but they only use two of it with facilities, and the rest of it is not used, and the whole thing is exempt. And I still don't think that's right either. To me, I look at it as if they're asking for services, whether it's police, or trash, or any kind of service the county provides, that they should help pay for some of that.
Yeah. So, if the, if the direction is that we're going to view the use of the land as the determining factor for whether to grant the exemption, then let's, let's just arbitrarily pick, the church camp is used by the church organization that owns the land itself for six weeks out of the year. That leaves 46 weeks that it's being used for some other purpose. And this is, I guess, where it gets complicated, and we get down into the weeds. Probably for six months out of the year, it's not being used for any purpose, because it's winter time, and there's, there's not a lot going on during that period of time. My, my thoughts on the matter is, give them the benefit of the doubt on something like that, and, and grant them the exemption for that, for, for those six months, or whatever time period of the, of the taxable year, that it's being used for, for no purpose. It's not, it's not being for, it's not being used for a non-exempt purpose.
Right.
So, that, that gives them seven, basically seven and a half months of exempt, exempt use. That leaves the remainder of the year, and this is where it becomes a little bit of a challenge. We're, according to the statute, we're required to partition that out. So, we would grant exempt, just to make the math easier, let's call it six months. Six months out of the year, they're granted exempt status, six months out of the year, they're taxed as if they are a regular.
Landowner.
A regular landowner.
So, it's based on timber, or whatever that class.
Some proportionality, yep.
Because I know we've had some in the past that have gone and logged their camps to raise income, which I'm assuming then would change them from.
They would, they would have to apply for, there are church camps, as you know, that have heavily timbered parcels, and they could easily apply for the timber exemption, have a forester do a management plan, fill out an FT 101, and be granted a timber exemption on those.
That would be different than the 602, whatever, it wouldn't be under the religious exemption, they'd have to apply for that separately. And that's, and that's directly in line with the, that LDS decision where they had their, their welfare farm that was in agriculture. They, they had applied for the religious exemption, and the court denied that. That didn't mean that they didn't come back and, and ask for the ag exemption later, which I assume they did.
What about pasture, if they run cows on?
Same thing.
It would, it'd fall under the ag exemption, they just have to apply, because it, it won't be, exemptions are not presumed.
The other one that was always tricky to me is, I think we have a lot of camps up here that are owned maybe by a religious organization, or a group of people that lease that camp out to a religious organization. They don't own the camp, there's professors that own that camp that are making, and to me, that was always, that shouldn't be exempt, those people are making income off that.
Well, and I think we're going to hear that argument quite a bit. I think your church camps will say, we, we, we only rent it out to other churches for religious purposes. There's a, there's a fine line distinction there, but if we're not looking, if we're, if we're looking at the use of the land, then we have to make a decision. We have to decide, okay, if they, if they limit who their tenants are to only those other churches, are you gonna, are you going to allow that, are you gonna view that as a religious use, or are you gonna look at that as an income-producing rental use, regardless of who, regardless of who the tenant is? I, I always go back, and I did this last year, I always go back, most everybody has.
That is part of our job.
Most everybody has a presence on the web, on the internet. So, you can go and look up what their rental criteria is on the website, and that's where you get some, some disparity in, in the application. They say, oh, we only, we only rent to other churches, but you go on their website, and it's anybody, it's open to anybody.
Well, and, so, even if you have somebody within your congregation that wants to rent your church for their wedding, and you charge a fee to do that, I mean, it's still, it's within your congregation, but you're getting income off of it.
Same thing with the daycare.
But do we want to view that income as money that's put back into that organization to maintain the land and the.
See, the books would have to show that. The books, they'd have to say, this is income from weddings. The books, they'd have to say, this is income from weddings from church members. But if it goes into another fund that doesn't, maybe is not related to that church, then I'd say, hmm, that's not gonna work.
Any money they make has gotta stay in that camp. They gotta be able to show that.
Yeah. And that's, so that's the purpose of the workshop, is to kind of start, start the, the information flow, both with the assessors as well as the, I mean, you make the initial decision. That's the Board of County Commissioners and then any appeals. Following that will be in front of you as the Board of Equalization. So you will have, what, what I anticipate is coming your way is a lot of applications are gonna be denied because there is insufficient information, their application, to answer these questions. So they're gonna stand up here and they're gonna have this dialogue with you, either sitting as the Board of County Commissioners or the Board of Equalization. So this is coming, this is coming. And I think you're gonna have quite a few applicants here standing in front of you. So I want you to be prepared, want to give you as much information as you can in advance so you can make well-informed decisions about how to, how best to, to make these decisions. I think that if, uh, a- and I think from a legal perspective, that e- even though there isn't certain cases that are specifically, I, I mean, I looked for, I looked for church camp cases that rent to other church camps or rent to other people and I couldn't find anything. Most everything was about, there's a lot of church camp cases out there, but it was about whether they qualified as religious, under the religious exemption. And the courts were pretty clear on that. Absolutely, they, they do. And it didn't have to be, you're conducting church services at the camp in order to qualify. You can go boating or swimming because you're teaching life skills and, and religious principles. Right, right. So I don't think there's any controversy over the qualification of, of a church camp for the exempt purpose. That's, that's pretty clear. What is less clear is when they offer that for weddings, for, uh, other church revenues and, and, and I guess here's where I'm at with, with, with that issue. You have wedding venues up here that pay taxes because they're not a religious organization. And now you have, you, you have the potential of creating a competitive disadvantage for property owners and business owners that make, make a living and pay property taxes based on, on, because they're required to. And now they're, they're not able to compete because, because these other venues can, can charge a lesser price because they don't have the burden of paying property taxes for that portion of the year.
I have a question in your comment. You said that you like for six months of the year, they're not using their property and so we shouldn't exempt that. Well, Hilda doesn't use his property for six months of the year either and he still is, he gets an ag exemption, but he still is, you know, paying taxes on the six months of the year that they're covered by snow. So I, I think that that's, that still is not a good qualification for me because it's still.
And I think, and I thi- I think there's some policy, a, a, a policy call there. I mean, that's, I, I threw it out there for, for discussion, but I think ultimately it's up to you, sitting as the board, to, to decide what's the best policy for this.
What is, uh, other counties, I mean, that dealt, that are dealing with the same issue?
We actually have a call into another similar county to ours, um, but we're just waiting for a callback. We probably have more church camps than any county in this state.
You have a ton. You do. So.
I guess.
I, I would say, I, I mean, subject to getting some additional more relevant information, there's a lot of cases out there where counties have denied, I mean, statute's clear. Both for benevolent charitable purposes or for religious purposes, that property needs to be used exclusively for the, for the purpose that, and if you get outside of that ex- exclusivity, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say, Neil, is that there's a lot of cases and the cases are there in front of the courts because the counties have denied the, the, the exempt application.
But what they're wanting to do is kind of narrow this whole show down to be more specific.
So you've got the no brainers, you know, they've got a church in a parking lot.
Sure.
You know, simple, 100% exemption.
Yeah.
And then, of course, you're gonna have the ones that are gonna be denied for whatever reason on the checklist. But then we're also wanting to know, would you entertain a partial exemption? And if so, we need some policy.
Well, let, let's say, for example, the one that I'm thinking about is if he has services once a year. So he's exempt for one week out of the year, then the rest of the time he's paying taxes on it?
Potentially. Yeah. And that, that's what the statute directs us to do. There's a, so there's a de minimis, so for, for proportionality is what it's called, you, you proportion out and there's, there's two methods of doing it. If, if you take an office space as, as an example and you have, you have church offices in the building, but they don't occupy the whole amount, so they rent, they rent half of it, half of the building out to other purpose, then basically you would take 50% of the value of that property and you would assess taxes because it's being used for a non-exempt purpose. Here, what we're dealing with is use as compared to a calendar, a taxable year. And the proportionality would apply based on the percentage of use during the calendar year, assuming that the whole, the whole property is being used for a camp. Whether it's a wedding venue one week and the next week it's a church camp and the week after that it's a family reunion. You basically count up the weeks and you proportion it out that way.
See, there's a, I've been involved with two different churches that had daycares at their church. Had some money-making.
As long as the money goes back in the church, I don't have a problem.
That's a hundred dollar question.
That's a hundred, and hopefully this forum will dig that out.
Yeah.
But that's not really a religious event. I mean, though, that might be.
They're just providing a service to the community.
They're just providing a service to the community. It's not a charitable event.
We've got a few more minutes if, if we can. Can we talk a little bit about schools? Cause I think that's another issue that is gonna grow up here. And I don't know, you know, like in the U of I stuff in McCall, McCall College, we've got the school outside the town here. How far do you go if they're only teaching school six months out of the year as the other six months coming on the books? So, I, I mean, again, you've got the exclusive use requirement for, for, for those applications. So if you are, um, i- i- if you are only in school for a portion of the year and you're using the property for a business venture, you know, school lets out and you got three months out of the year, you use the property for, for a business venture, you probably have that proportionality, uh, equation that needs to, needs to take place.
I think probably schools, my concern with doing anything there is they would, like all the baseball teams, that may be city league that is using that property, is if they're not charging the city to use the property, then I think that that is a community-sponsored event and I would certainly hate to charge them for anything.
So public schools are, are basically, they're, they're.
They're different.
Yes. They, there is this government property and public school property is just statutorily exempt, straight across the board. What we're talking about is private schools that are not necessarily, so that they have, I mean, then they fall under a very similar category to the churches and the benevolent charitable organizations for private schools.
I go back to the same, same concept in both. What, how much of this property is actually being used for a specific purpose? Like the, one of the campgrounds I'm thinking about, probably has 150 acres and they use about five of it, not always for religious events. But the rest of it should come off the roll. I mean, they should not get an exemption, in my opinion, for the whole thing. It is, you provide us a footprint and you tell us what happens within that footprint and how often it happens within that footprint.
Yeah.
And then we go from there on a proration basis. And just, I'm thinking about private schools. There's one that's recently opened in the community and you're right, it's only used for six months of the year. So what is that being used for the rest of the year? Does it become their daycare? Does it become, you know, what else is that being used for? And I think that we're gonna start seeing more and more of these community schools. So that would be a good, good call out.
Well, and I think, I think too that it's, it's gonna be a hard find. I'm, I'm, I think this is a good start, but I think we're gonna add some more stuff to the form as we get into this to say.
Kristi.
We need a little finer information. And then the other one thing I wanna state is if they don't fill this out by April 15th, they're not exempt for the whole year. If this isn't done, it's an automatic no, correct?
So is this part of the proration issue that's in court right now? I'm being litigated.
I don't know about that.
Uh, was that, that was related to the homeowner's exemption? That's specific to the homeowner's exemption, not the.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So the deadline to file for exempt status is April 15th?
And if they don't have this filled out to our liking, where we think we have enough information, then we have to automatically turn it down for the year and they can reapply next year, right?
Well.
They have the right to appeal.
They have the right to appeal.
Oh, okay. And that's what, I, I guess that's what I'm, I'm setting the stage for is that if insufficient information comes in with these applications, the assessor, the assessor will deny those applications. I would expect that they will come in front of you on, on, on appeal with additional information. So, so what will be the most helpful to you? A couple of things I would, I would suggest if you have, if you have an appeal in front of you, I can work with Sue's office and, and say, okay, this application is, is asking for exemption under this statute here are, kind of lay out what the statute says, kind of break it down into bullet points for you with some of these key questions, maybe as part of that document, so you can remember to ask these questions of, of the applicant. You know, what, what's the use of the property?
That's what I was gonna ask you to do.
The whole property.
It's very billy. You don't really know what you can and can't ask.
Yeah.
Getting yourself in trouble.
We can give you some, we can give you some, uh, some, some questions that, uh, and will help elicit some.
I think part of that, you know, when, you know, I can help say, okay, here's, here's the church camp. You know, kids and everybody uses this piece of church camp, here's the rest of the property. Is there any, anything out there legally that defines, that breaks that in half? Or we could even split that apart?
Oh, yeah, yeah, there is. There's, there's several cases out there that talk about proportionality and, and how you divide up, uh, uses of, of the property. The, kind of the, the key, the, the, the main case was, uh, was out of Payette County and that, and it was, it was that office space analogy that I just gave you. That was what, that was what was being discussed down there. And that's what the court determined was that a percentage of the property can be proportioned out. There is a, there's what is called the de minimis exemption, which is you, you do a full assessment of the property and the property value. If the rental, if the rental income is less than 3% of the overall value, meaning it's just a small, such a small portion of, of the use, then, uh, the statute directs the assessor to give the full exemption for that, for that purpose. But when we're talking about church camp that has their own church there for just a couple of weeks out of the year and then for the remainder of the year, you're probably gonna get above that 3% de minimis. And then that puts Sue in the position where she's gonna have to determine the proportion, the proportionality equation for that, for that property.
That makes sense. I'm a little concerned. We've only got two weeks. I mean, when is this?
Well, yes and no. The applications are due to our office by April 15th. At that point, you know, the ones that have been coming in, Kristi reviews, she gives them to me to review and we give them to the prosecutor's office to review. So sometime after April 15th, I'll come before you guys, after we've had time to review them all. And we'll basically have, you know, a list of, these are the ones that have complied. These are the applications that are incomplete that we, you know, feel that should be denied. And then the ones that are denied and/or the ones that we think might, uh, deserve a, a partial exemption. It, depending on what you guys decide, you know, they can all appeal that. They have until the fourth Monday in June to appeal their assessment notice. Cause what's gonna happen is Kristi will take the exemption away and she'll put them in at full market value. They're gonna get their assessment notice and they're gonna go, what happened? I turned my paperwork in. At that time, they will have time to, to file an appeal with our office by the fourth Monday in June. And then, of course, as you know, sitting as the Board of Equalization, you guys can request more documentation. I mean, Kristi is, if, if they're incomplete, she has been doing her due diligence to reach out to them to try to get as much information as she can to let them know, you know, it's incomplete. We need this from you. We need that from you to be able to move forward.
When's the deadline for the BOE to have all of their decisions made? Cause that's time sensitive too.
The second Monday in July, you, we, they have to adjourn.
Like this, not the seventh, ninth?
10.
That doesn't matter.
I think it's the 10th.
So you have.
July 10th this year.
Unless they could go to district court after that. Or unless they go to the state.
Board of Tax Appeals and then on to district court if.
Right, right.
So are those hard dates? Those are set by the commission?
That's Idaho code.
Yeah.
So my concern is, is that, I mean, if we send this to somebody that runs a church camp, they may or may not even get their mail before this. And so it's like, you know.
When did you send these out? Did you send them out first of year?
January.
So they've had that all since first year to do this. So as far as, oh, I didn't get it or something, I think that's a pretty.
And then I just sent out a, a reminder last week.
Did you send this packet or did you send what's currently in place?
This.
Okay.
Sent the packet.
The extended packet.
We made that for this.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna learn a lot from this and, and probably perfect this form a little bit there as we go.
We were just talking about that this morning. So you guys have until July 10th at 5:00 PM to have all BOE decisions made. And the public has until June, Monday, June 26th, which is the fourth Monday, by 5:00 PM to file an appeal.
I think the other thing this does is we do help a lot of church camps up here. They're buying ground rapidly around them. And it takes it off the tax rolls for other people. So it's a tax shift when they do that. And secondly, it is, what are you gonna use that ground for? Is it just to protect yourself from others around you?
Well, a lot of times they will cite that it's used for like recreational purposes for the kids at camp, whether it be zip lines, hiking, uh, tent camping, what else?
Just a walking trail.
Just the walking trail.
Danger trail.
That's where I was gonna bring that up.
That's what you guys will be up against.
Yeah, it is.
On those bareland parcels that they're requesting.
The thing you gotta keep in the back of your mind is we're still providing all those services they need, when they need it.
Well, I think this, this was, this is a good workshop for everybody to kind of start thinking about the policies. And obviously you're probably not gonna set any today. I'm assuming maybe we'll revisit this after you have some time to think about it.
Oh, I'm, I think this is a great start.
Okay.
But we're gonna find during the BOE process that we need to ask this question as well. Well, if I feather that up.
I, I, I think it's, it's fair to, it's fair to say that, uh, the BOE calendar's gonna be full this year.
Yes.
And so be prepared.
Which means that you're here every day for two weeks.
Be prepared.
Last year we heard 400 or 450 and we were here every day for, oh. It was three days a week for two weeks, I think. So, I mean, one year they had 3,000. It took them months to come up.
And still didn't hear them all.
We're gonna get a lot of pushback on this.
The applicant, I, yeah, the applicants have gotten into the habit of just filling out the form with just the minimal amount of information and that was sufficient to be, to be approved. The, the policy now is if insufficient information is supplied to make a, a, a determination, then the application's gonna be denied, which is 180 degrees in a different direction.
Sounds like they may wanna get a lawyer to help them fill these things out.
Well, I, I, that's not.
Somebody that knows really what they're doing, cause this is pretty in-depth and they need.
It, it.
Get across their t's and not threes.
Sure. I mean, they, they, they could. I do believe that you can fill this information out. I do believe that you can fill this information out without the help of an attorney, but, uh, I'm not going to discourage that at all. I think an attorney could certainly help them a bit if they feel like they need.
Can we talk a little bit too about B O E? I know in the years past, you guys have worked with different taxpayers and come to an agreement before you come to us. But we still have to approve that agreement. Can we do that in a bulk way?
No.
Each one of your appraisers has 20 or 30 they've settled on instead of doing each one at a time. Can we do the whole thing as a bulk?
The appraiser.
Well, we didn't.
Well.
Changes we make at the beginning of the month, you could do that as a bulk, but not. Oh, yeah, we can do an amended notice.
Right.
Well.
I know the code is kind of restricted.
But actually, think about that for a minute though. Okay, if their application is denied, they get their assessment notice because you've taken them out of exempt status completely. They get their assessment, they're like, holy moly, they call in and they provide more documentation. But you're already reaching out and asking for that documentation.
Yeah.
I do believe, help me with this, that the commissioners have to be the ones to either approve or deny an application, correct?
And we approve what you guys agreed to with that taxpayer. One at a time. And what I'm seeing is if you had 50 of them that in the same condominium complex or something.
He's talking about that. Not, not these, but like our.
Yeah, just a normal taxpayer.
Property appeals that.
Oh, the, the appraiser requests?
The appraiser request.
Actually, you guys, I was just counting backwards on the calendar. And I don't think we're going to have those this year because from the fourth Monday in June to the second Monday in July is 10 days. So they have 10 days to appeal, which means they could appeal, uh, an appraiser or amended notice and still have 10 days to appeal it. So I don't think we're going to have any appraiser request appeals this year.
That will speed up the process.
Yes, it will.
I think, right, so, I mean, if you take a hypothetical example and say, we've got an application that's denied for insufficient information. And, and so, so then the assessor's office sends out the full appraised value and they come back and say, whoa, what, what the heck's going on? And we say, here's the information that you're lacking. For example, we need to know what the property is being used for, for the other two weeks out of the year that you're not using as, as a church camp. And if it's being rented out, is it being rented out to other religious organizations? And more importantly, is it going right back into the church camp for maintenance and, and just overall? And, and, and then you can negotiate, okay, well, this is going to put us into that proportionality equation we have to do. The assessor does all the math and says, okay, we're going to, we're going to appraise this at 50%. I think each one of those individual, and, and they agree to that. Each one of those settlements have got to come before the board for final approval. But if both parties are, are in agreement, we can explain, here's what the agreement is, here's what it's based on. Move on to the next one. Here's what the agreement is.
Really quick.
So you can go through quick. I wouldn't say, here's a big package just to prove this without, without some explanation for this is what we did with this camp. This is what they agreed to. Here's what we did with this camp and here's what they agreed to.
And you know, this process is a pretty fast process. We might do 80 or 90 or 100 a day. So it's come in, get done, they agree to it, everybody's good. I make a motion, we approve the request and move on. So it happens pretty fast.
It's the ones that people want to come in here and sit and argue it.
And they'll have, you'll have people here in tears and mad and upset and it's.
Well, and you.
Sound like a.
Hard to harp.
Happy day.
No, it's not. It's a long day.
Right. And you guys could convene as the Board of Equalization perhaps on your, you know, like for an hour on your commissioner days at the end of the day perhaps?
I didn't think we could start that till after the appeal been enforced.
Well, it's, it states in Idaho code that you guys can convene as the Board of Equalization throughout the year. Uh, cause you know, we send out occupancy assessment notices, missed roll assessment notices.
I did not know that.
On, on the appeals, it would be within that timeframe, but what's outside of the appeals that we would be looking at?
We'll have to look at code to be sure.
Yeah, look at code, because if you have a bunch that you guys settle on before the fourth June, fourth Monday in June, we could do B O E.
That's my point. That's my point. We could take care of some of those.
That would be awesome.
So it's not so condensed.
Yeah, yeah, that would be awesome. Let's look into that.
Okay.
Cause it'll, it'll just tear you up. It's a hard day, I'm telling you what.
Well, as a, as a, I guess maybe a final thought on that, on that topic. The, the goal or the aim isn't, isn't necessarily to increase revenues for the county. The goal is to apply the statute the way that the statute was intended to be applied.
Yeah.
And that levels the playing field for everybody. It's, and, and that's what we're trying to do, is make sure that everybody plays by the same set of rules and nobody has any competitive advantages or disadvantages, uh, in, 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 in the marketplace and in our communities. So, so that's, that's the policy driving this. That's what the legal issues are driving this.
When, when, I'm going to say I, I show up and I buy this piece of property and, and we're going to make it into a church camp. And I apply for my 501(c)(3) for this piece of property. I'm sure everybody that does that is assuming that, that's covering that whole piece of property. So now are we starting to get pushed back on this?
Every single, every single entity is a 501(c)(3) in this pool. Every single one of them is. And so that's, that's an important, that's an important point to make and it's an important distinction. That does not qualify you for property tax exemption. That qualifies you only for federal income tax exemption. And you can be a 501(c)(3) and still owe property taxes to Valley County. So every single one of these, I haven't seen one yet that's not a nonprofit or, or organized under 501(c)(3) umbrella. So that's, that is not, uh, that's not the qualifier. They still have to meet the specific requirements for the, and, and they're all outlined in Idaho code. Legislature's already decided that if you are a religious organization, here are the elements you have to meet. If you're a charitable, if you're the Masons or the Lions Club, here are the requirements you have to meet. And if you're a private school, here's the criteria.
That's what I'm getting to. And if it's already outlined in code, then we have something to stand on.
Yep, and, and, and I'll make sure that we have an outline for each of you so you know exactly, this is a, this is a private school or this is a, a, a church or whatever.
I don't think in code however, whatever Neil asked was, if I buy a 40 acre property and I have a church on one acre, right now, we are exempting the entire 40 acres.
That's what the person's thinking.
Right. There would be a change in the county policy where they would take that one acres and say, this is what is true for the religious exemption. The other 39 acres, how are you using that for church purposes? And that's what they would have to show.
Something else I want to bring up though is we keep talking about seeing whether they're putting this income back into whatever into the church. I am not an accountant and I cannot, I can't ascertain whether they are putting it back in.
I was going to say that's got to be a difficult.
You know, so I don't know where that comes into play because we don't have a non.
That's always a question though, that where is that money going? They're going to have to explain that to us.
I, I think that's, I, I, I think the resolution for that, based on the applications that I've reviewed both last year and this year, their accounting practices are not going to differentiate between what the overall financial health of the organization is versus specifically this particular property, what it's being used for. So that's where the hearing is important. That's where they're going to have to bring information to you as the Board of Equalization and be, and then you're going to have to decide whether that information is sufficient and credible and whether you want to grant or deny the, the application based on that information. Because the way they're doing their accounting isn't going to be clear enough.
Right.
And many of them are just for this entity.
Correct.
It's for the entire corporation or, you know, the whole diocese.
Right.
And this is just a part of that accounting.
I do believe Kristy is requesting them to get it just for this particular property.
And, but some of them.
And I know there was some work and I don't know if it's happening yet on some of the medical stuff that's not exempt anymore. And I don't know if, where we are on that, but at one time they were talking about you had to be open 24 hours a day to be an exempt medical facility. And I don't know if that ever got approved or not, but anyway, we're way over time, so.
You actually have.
No, we have.
I thought it was 11, it was.
Right, we're okay.
I was looking at the clock. Oh, we got lots of time.
Few, few more minutes if you have any questions.
We got another 35 minutes again.
Oh, we have till 11?
Yeah.
Ah.
Doug changed it for us because he.
Thanks Doug.
He had a vision.
So that would be the next one that I think we ought to look into because I know there's a lot of clinics and that kind of stuff. But the way I understood, the last time I read it, and it was a couple of years ago, was that it had to be a 24 hour day service to be considered tax exempt.
Really?
But I don't know if the legislature ever approved it. I don't know where that went.
No, I guess we'll have to look into that.
A lot of issues with buying old houses and converting them into a hearing clinic or a little kid's clinic or something.
The clinics aren't open 24 hours.
They're not open 24 hours.
Majority of clinics are not.
Hospitals and ER rooms are. And I know Commissioner Beck is looking into that right now with some issues with St. Luke's. And there, he proposed legislation this year, but I don't think it ever got introduced. That, um, St. Luke's has over a billion dollars in reserves. That's not a nonprofit.
Billion?
Over a billion.
Doesn't surprise me.
And so he's, he's looking at it down there because there's a lot of little mini clinics all over.
So do we want to introduce the sunny ridge factor test?
No, I, the sunny ridge factor test is an eight point test, but that's really just about how to determine whether or not they qualify under the, uh, under the exempt purposes or exempt status. I don't, I mean, going through our list of properties who've applied, I don't see that that's going to be a, well, there's going to be a couple this year, new ones this year that weren't in the packet before that we're going to have to apply the, the sunny ridge factors on.
Is this for religious organizations?
No, it's, it's more for a charitable, charitable purpose. But I think if we start talking about that, then we're going to start talking about a specific application.
Oh, I didn't mean to go there.
So we'll have.
I meant as a whole.
So here's, here's a couple of ideas going forward. I think that we need to, we need to really outline what the criteria is under each of the statutory exemptions based on the application itself with a list of proposed questions, uh, for, for the B O E to ask when they're in place.
That's a great idea.
But then also have a, maybe a legal briefing on some of these sticky issues. So you can have that reviewed and, and in advance. And what I have on my list is, uh, what's the use of the property, the full property? If you are, uh, you've owned 40 acres and you have two acres of the 40 that you've got, you know, cabins and, you know, a meeting place for your church camp, what are you doing with the other 38? And kind of a briefing on what the legal parameters or what the case law says on that. The second one I have on my list is, uh, daycare and preschool use during, uh, during the week. The third one is use of the land versus the use of the revenues that are being generated by the land. Those are the three that came to mind. Do you have others that you would like to know more about?
Like the money that I come in from, because we had that discussion there a little bit. If you rent the property out, does money just go back to the organization or daycare? Does that money go back into the church?
And that's.
That needs to be delineated.
That's within the umbrella of use of the land versus use of the revenue that's generated by the land. So you have a number of issues there. You have, um, if they rent it and if they rent the property out to other religious organizations, will you consider that a religious use of the land? Or do you consider that a commercial use of the land because you are charging a rent, uh, you're charging rent? Will you view it differently if the church camp limits the tenant to only other religious organizations? Or if their website says, any willing customer, any paying customer that's willing to abide by our rules can, can rent this out? Will you, will you look at that differently? So there's, there's nuances on, on each one of these analyses.
Well, I think it needs to be that we will hold them accountable. If we find that they are renting it, they say they're not and they are, they automatically lose their exemption the next year.
Yeah.
There needs to be something in that.
Yeah, and I think with daycare, what you're going to see is we're going to charge people, put their kids in daycare and take that money to pay the people to run the daycare. And very little of it is actually going to go into the church or into the building. It's going to be just for salary.
Yeah, well, and just, just so you know too, the, the applicant, this isn't going to be kind of this try, shock and awe kind of approach. When the assessor's office denies the application because there's insufficient information, I'll work with, I'll, I'll work with the assessor's office on laying out what all the questions are. So they can come prepared, they can come prepared with the answers to the questions that we have. For example, if there's an application that says, oh, we only rent the church camp out to other churches, we'll take a screenshot of the website that says that that's not what that says. So, so then they can answer, they can answer that question.
So can we go as far as to say, okay, we need all your accounting documentation to show each person you rented that to? And if we find in there that you didn't do that, then that violates that whole concept and you will lose your exemption for the year.
Yep, that is the, that's kind of the point of this conversation is getting, getting yourself prepared for. What is it that, what is it that you're going to be willing to accept when they come in front of the B O E as far as information goes? Can they show, can they show that they're using it for the purposes that they say they use it for? And do they have the documentation? Are you going to take their word for it? And that's your call.
I think part of this is that they're going to have, I mean, someone's going to have to give you a year of grace. But what you have to do is they have to understand this is what they can use this property for. And historically they may have been able to use it for this. And now they got to dial it down to they can use it for this. They need to understand that.
Well, and, and they need to make that business decision that if I ran out 120 acres of my church camp for pasture and I make $10,000, that's still more money than what I'm going to pay tax. So they're still going to be ahead.
And is that money going to go back into the church though?
Well.
So you might, you might get that.
The other thing, Brian, that's really been hard for me in B O E is, is can I ask somebody those details? What can I, well, I know that you rented this out to Joe Schmo from down below and they had 150 people at, there for a wedding. And they're not a religious, can I, can I introduce that kind of information?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think that's, that's the purpose of the hearing is to really elicit enough information for you to make a, an informed decision about whether to grant or deny the application for exemption. And so certainly your questions that you're probing into, what's the land being used for? What's the revenues that you're generating? Those kinds of things are, are expected actually.
So the one thing I think we do have to clarify is the point of, um, this might be a group that owns this ground and is leasing it to a church.
Right.
In my opinion, that is not a tax exemption.
Group ownership.
It's got to be the land ownership has to drive the exemption, in my opinion.
So the ownership of the land and the use of the land.
Yeah.
I think the ownership, that's a really good point because we've seen those in the past that this is some families that bought it years ago and they lease it out as a church camp, that they make money off of it.
They're pretty va, I mean, you look around the county, there's pretty valuable pieces of property, lots of, of lakefront property that are highly desirable for wedding venues in particular, uh, you know, uh, big family reunions or corporate retreats. And, and I think.
Now I don't blame them for using it around that way. Now, I don't blame them for using it around that way.
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, if you've got that much income off of it, you should be paying taxes just like every other entity in Valley County is.
And, and, and that, back to the legal issues that are driving the, this discussion is that the, as a matter of fundamental fairness, if you use it for a commercial purpose and you're competing against other businesses in the community that have a similar business, then the cost of doing business should be the same for everybody. So we all play by the same set of rules and we're not giving anyone a competitive advantage in the marketplace. Religious, there is no competition in, in religious use. Those are core community values that isn't profit motive. And, and the, the, the policy behind giving exemptions for those uses is well settled. Legislature said churches deserve those exemptions, and I think we would willingly and gladly grant those exemptions as long as they're using it exclusively for that, for that use.
I came across one checking on the website, and I actually really, I like this one. You brought up though, a different side of it, but it says, "We can only rent to churches and other nonprofit organizations. This is not a hotel or individual campground." And I thought, "Yeah, that's perfect", you know? But now you're, you had kind of brought up that even if you're renting to other religious entities, you're still creating income. But I, I feel okay with this because I, I loved this because I thought they are just, they're not.
Look, it, it, it goes back to, I actually found this case after our meeting last week. Otherwise I would have brought it up and we would have talked about it. But the, it, it goes back to, and this was a case that was back in the seventies and it was the LDS welfare, welfare farm example. There's no part of that, of that case that suggests that the church was using it for any other purpose than what they had designed, what they had designed it to be. And that is they're, they're growing, they're growing wheat on, on this particular parcel. They were using donated labor from their membership to, to do most, if not all, of the work. Everything that they harvested, they weren't selling on the open market. It was going back into their own flour mill and they were making flour. And then they were distributing that for, for a charitable purpose. But the court, because the statute says specifically it has to be used exclusively for the exempt purpose that it was, that you're applying for, says this is not, this is not a religious purpose, this is a welfare purpose. Made a, made a very close distinction, but nevertheless, it was still a distinction. And said, "You do not qualify for the religious exemption." I'm sure the next day the church applied for the ag exemption. Or, or even the, the benevolent welfare charitable exemption and may have applied under that statute instead. But nevertheless, that's how narrowly the court interprets the statute.
So how do they do something like your stories about different religious organizations own Pepsi and Coca-Cola? I'm assuming they, that's not exempt, so they just pay full taxes on all those assets and then.
There's lots of, there's lots of controversy over that and you may have seen some of those, some of those recent, back to the LDS. The LDS has quite an investment portfolio and you've seen some of those news organiza, news releases last year or two about maybe those shouldn't be exempt from income tax. This is, we're talking about federal tax code now, but yeah.
Well, and I think we started this conversation last year with some decisions that we made. And that's what, you know, I mean, if you hold one accountable, you have to hold everybody accountable.
Right.
That's just.
Well, we need to be fair and equitable.
Exactly. You know, playing field.
Yeah, I mean.
Absolutely.
The people, you know, the tax shift goes to, you know, the other.
Rest of us.
Yeah.
So something like this though, if it is just being rented out, it's still being rented, but it's.
Yeah, but it would be nice to know, can you give us a list of all those that you rented to?
Right.
And if they're all religious or, then we're fine, but if one of them is some guy free to once he gets married and have his wedding there, that's a different issue.
And you know, so I'm, where my heart goes is things like, you know, the, the climbing kids where it's all disabled. So they're renting out the facility for the disabled kids to go in and have, you know, a camp for a week. Are they charging for that? I mean, how, how does that, that's where it's going to become really difficult for me.
It's hard because you do have to have some kind of.
You have to have some operating expenses. You have to pay the power bill. You have to feed those kids while they're there. I mean, you've got to pay counselors to, to be there and guide and teach them and supervise them.
So is that, is that the model? And that's what I don't know. That might be a question that you can ask is that, is the organization providing the counselors and all of that? Or do you bring your own personnel? You're just, you just get the key to the lock and, and have at it. And I don't, I don't know, there's not enough information to make that determination whether they have full-time employees or seasonal employees that are there to run these other camps or, or how all that works. I think you have a challenging question to answer in front of you over, if, if we, if we adopt the welfare farm model and say it is, and, and really you should because that's what the law, that's what the case law says, it's all about the use of the land, not what the use of the revenue that was derived for. So then the question becomes, okay, if we're renting this to other churches, are you using the land for religious purposes? I think you can answer yes or no, depending on how, how you perceive that. It's either, it's either a commercial revenue generating purpose or if you limit it to other churches, the use of that land is being used for religious reason or religious purpose.
And I honestly think the religious side of this is going to be fairly easy. Once we figure it out, this application is going to really tighten down on those. My concern is the educational schools kind of stuff. Are you renting out facilities to other folks where you're getting a rental check every month from that counselor? Or whatever it is, then that's income.
And how is that being?
That's a little different.
How is that, the use of the land being used for educational purposes?
Right.
They're going to have to, they're going to have to step up their end of the show to understand the parameters of what they're having to.
Well, then, and then the obvious follow-up question of that is, okay, you were renting this out to other churches, but how many weeks out of the year did you rent it to somebody other than the church? So we can do the proportion, we can do our proportionality equation.
And what I was trying to say earlier is it's really a business model decision. If you can make $20,000 off rent and only pay $5,000 in taxes, hey, we're going to keep doing this.
Exactly.
It makes sense. Same thing with the school.
It's a business model.
It's a business model and this, you know, you're still advantageous to keep renting, leasing facilities out, but.
Right.
You know, my big thing is we're still providing all the services. Now, I know a lot of the religious organizations are paying a solid wage fee. Everybody should be paying that, I hope.
Yes.
Because that's where we're getting.
Well, we did an audit on that, what, three year, two year?
Two.
Two or three years ago.
Two, I think.
We went through and, I mean, it was a full-on audit.
And we've reclassified all those different accounts now.
Right.
Should be fairly easy for those folks to do that.
We always had to be because I was here, so.
It's amazing how our trash is just exploding again.
All of our issues are exploding.
So how much litigation do you think may come of this?
I would say more than zero. Somewhere between zero and a whole bunch.
And that's why I think that, you know, finding out what's going on around the state. And, you know, that's going to be really important because this will be state litigation that drives a lot of decisions for everyone.
You have some landowners in Valley County who are well-funded, large organizations, multi, multinational organizations that will protect their rights as a, as a, as either a church or a charitable organization or whatever. But regardless, regardless, we will stand strong on the, we all play by the same set of rules. Regardless of how well-funded you are, how, how many lawyers you bring, that kind of thing.
Wherever you are.
We just want to be fair and, and treat everybody, treat everybody the same.
And what's really nice is that we finally reached this point because we have good legal behind us now where we can start going down this trail where we couldn't do this before.
Brian Noggle's awesome.
He's ours good help.
So is Ryan Okie.
Man, you guys are going to, you guys are really going to make. I'm not a good poker player. Everybody tells me my face goes red when you see it. Thank you for the very kind words. I would agree. Brian Noggle is an excellent, excellent attorney.
And he's ours good help.
And he is really good help.
You are definitely well-represented on the criminal side of, of the.
I couldn't resist, sorry.
It's amazing to me how a good prosecutor can change the whole atmosphere and the whole facility. Here at Cherros and everywhere, it changes everything. It's like awesome. It's been great.
I, as I've said before, I'm in the, I am in the customer service business. And my job is to help you and the assessor and every department head do their job better. And, and if, if you're successful, then I'm, I'm successful, so.
And we're all in the customer service business.
Right.
We're here to do people's business.
We are.
For public service.
But I'll tell you what, BOE is one of those that you will hear about on the street.
Well, you have.
People coming up to you, really nailing you on this one.
Well, you have, the, the timing of this probably isn't the greatest because the biggest initiative in Boise with this year's legislature in the last several years has been property tax relief. And, and to the extent that people perceive that, this action as counter to that. I, I wanted to say this and repeat it a couple of times so you, as the elected officials, will know that this isn't about bringing more dollars into the county. This is about making sure that everybody plays by the same set of rules. If this results in more tax dollars being brought into the county, then you, as the elected officials, have the opportunity to look at your revenue stream and determine whether or not additional tax relief can, can be afforded. And, and that's a result of holding people accountable to the law and everybody playing by the same set of rules, so.
Well, this can provide property tax relief, it's just a different bucket.
Right.
Because, because we've been, you know, not charging maybe correctly.
Yeah.
Then it's gone to the other taxpayers. So this is a property tax.
I think you guys are going to see a lot more people applying for exemptions after this.
Yeah, but I, I, I mean, make no mistake, I don't think this is going to be a smooth or easy road to go down, especially the first year or two. Whenever you make some, some policy shifts, that, that always results in some controversy, so.
Nothing feels easy right now. There's stardust out there somewhere.
Yeah.
Thank you ladies for bringing this up and a good conversation.
Yeah, great conversation to church growers.
So what now?
So we just keep moving forward. We, we listen to BOE and see what kind of questions they ask and what they, what information that we are, we're not getting. Try to reform these a little bit as we go. And I'm willing to kick a few free this year just to learn, learn this and tighten up our process. And probably next year we should have it nailed pretty good.
So, so we'll keep track of the ones that you might let the exemption go, but this is, this is the list that you need from them for next year?
And I think your point about you're not an accountant, I don't want to put you guys in that position, but I think if we start getting that information, it's going to flare. Hey, you're not, it's not just religious organizations you're renting to, it's all kinds of people.
Everybody, yep.
You're going to see a big.
Well, they're going to get, you know, if, if they want the waiver, they need to prove that waiver.
Once, once they know, it, it's not some bolt saying, we won't have to be the bad guys sitting up there.
Yeah.
Keeping them, their feet to the fire.
Yep.
I think the only thing that gives me pause is just the shortened period of time. It feels like we're shifting the rules underneath of them. And that's why I think this first year is going to be something where we're going to have to look at each one individually.
We're going to have to forgive.
Because I do feel like that there's a shortened window here.
But they've had this since January.
However, we're talking different things even than what's in this packet. And so I, I would really encourage that if somebody is denied, that you give them enough documentation to come back to BOE and find some success because I, I feel like we're changing the rules in the middle of the stream and that always gives me pause.
I don't know. I feel like we're just asking for more information to be able to verify. Asked, right, for income use.
The answers to the questions in the past have been sufficient to, to get to the exemption status. This, this is, that, that part of that has changed where, you know, for example, the question of are you, are you renting this to other, other organizations? If they said no, it was, that, it was assumed that that was true. We're checking.
We're checking.
We are checking. And that, that may come as an abrupt change to them, but they shouldn't be surprised by that. Because, and, and I think the plan, so, so the plan will be, we, we will, I mean, if the basis of the denial is going to be on the fact that they incorrectly answered the question or they didn't give enough information, we'll take screenshots of the website and say, "The basis of the denial is the fact that you answered no, you're not leasing this out. However, your website says."
Your marketing difference.
This, 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 and this, and you need to supplement your answers to, to, to meet the burden of, of proof that is on the applicant.
They have to apply for this exemption every year.
Every year.
Just like farmers apply for an ag exemption.
Homeowners exemptions do not have to be reapplied for every year, but these exemptions do. So religious, educational, charitable, benevolent.
And just so you know, on the ag exemption, you fill out a form every fall about your cost of production and yields and cost of harvesting. I mean, it's a very detailed. And if you don't fill it out, you don't get it.
You lose the exemption for daycare.
I've serviced all the board. He says, "I didn't do that one year on piece property" and they hit me on it.
So gimme.
Yeah, they're usually back.
You only do it once and then you learn and then you move forward. So I mean, it, it will be a year or two here that will be a little more.
And so what, what these did this year was basically make everybody apply almost for the first time. Because a lot of these people have been exempt for 30-plus years and it's never been re-looked at. And so what I was going to say is that in the past, there was one, one sheet of paper sent to everybody for a re-application.
Six questions or something.
Yeah, and it was just basically sign your name, did anything change? Yes, no, and sign your name, you know?
Well, and if anybody looked at what was on the shirt, it would have been on notice, you know?
Well, this has been kind of a process for.
Well, and they're going to complain more about having to fill out the form than they are the actual exemption. I can see that.
I have to say, I've kind of been pleasantly surprised. I've had some people asking why. It wasn't just a simple form. But you explained that we're updating our records, basically. This has to be. And, and I have to say, for the majority.
Get that right soon.
All right.
Hey, Doug, can you meet us or we'll be back at 11:90 please? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
You're back on, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, welcome back, everybody, we're still on our April 3rd agenda, our next agenda item is a public hearing, this is an action item, this is the appeal of P&amp;Z Commission decision, Bitten Storage Building, the way this public hearing will work is I'll open it up, I'll ask for any ex parte or conflict from the commissioners, if there is none, we'll move on to a staff report and then Brian, I'm assuming you're the appellate, and then we'll have a presentation from the appellate, then a presentation from the applicant, any testimony from in the public, which is proponents uncommitted and opponents, a rebuttal by both, any questions for everybody and then I'll close the public hearing and we'll talk about deliberation, so at this time, I'll open up the public hearing at 11 o'clock even, ask if anyone on this board has any conflict of interest or ex parte contact.
I do not.
I do not. We'll get to listen to that. So at this time, I will ask staff to give a report, Sinda, you're up.
So, appeal of a planning and zoning commission decision that conditional use permit is not required for a storage building, the property is owned by BP Properties LLC, it's addressed at 14014 Highway 55 in the southeast of the northeast, section 33, township 18 North, range three east of the Boise Meridian Valley County Idaho and it's 18.44 acres. And on the screen you can see the property we're talking about, this was the old rodeo grounds that we had previously talked about here. A Dusty Bitten has proposed building a 300-foot by 50-foot structure at 14014 Highway 55, states the building would be for storage if items used only for personal use and I attached the diagrams for you to look at, on February 9th, the planning and zoning commission determined that a conditional use permit would not be required as long as the building is used only for personal use. The Valley County Deputy Prosecuting Attorney on behalf of Valley County has appealed the decision, the intent of the appeal is to elicit additional necessary information so that the administrative record will have sufficient details to determine allowed use of the site. Lack of information concerning the business ownership of the property and personal use needs to be examined further. BP Properties owns the parcel, that's the land and the buildings, Dusty Bitten stated that the storage buildings would be used by him, his family, and his business partner's family. Dusty Bitten lives at Seven Boulder View Place, mailing address is listed here, BP Properties LLC has the same mailing address. On February 3rd, 2023, Dusty Bitten requested confirmation that a conditional use permit would not be required to demolish an old shed and build a storage building to be used for personal use, proposed building plans were included. On February 3rd, staff replied that the building appears to be a storage unit that could be turned into a public rental, so a conditional use permit would be needed. On February 3rd, Dusty Bitten appealed the administrative decision to the Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission. The appeal was scheduled for the next commission meeting date of February 9th, the P&amp;Z commissioners discussed, discussed the location, building renderings, and proposed use, the commission determined that a conditional use permit was not required for storage buildings used only for personal use, if the use changes, a conditional use permit would be required. On February 21st, Deputy Prosecutor Brian Okey appealed the decision, recommended that the Board of County Commissioners conduct a public hearing and make a reasoned decision based on a complete administrative record, intent is not to overturn the commission's decision but to elicit additional necessary information so that the administrative record will have sufficient information to make a reasoned decision based on evidence in the record, the current record is inadequate. Staff response to appeal, the use of the property must be determined in category and land use classification table should be determined, and I attach that table. The parameters for determining personal use versus commercial uses must be determined, this allows for staff to be able to determine at what point a conditional use permit would be required, is that if he rents the units, if he sells the units, if other people use the units. Legal notice for the appeal was posted in the Star News on March 9th and March 16th, potentially affected agencies were notified on March 3rd, forbidden and property owners within 300 feet of the property line were notified by fax sheets sent March 3rd, the notice fax sheet was posted on the Valley County website on March 2nd and the site was posted March 16th. Agency comments received, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality responded with their boilerplate letter that they sent us for all CUP applications. Neighbor comments received, April and Cory Whitney, 18 Nob Hill Drive and Richard and Shelley Platt, 24 Nob Hill Drive, would like additional information to be provided on the following, question whether the use of the site, whether it is truly personal or commercial in nature, the proposed 15,000 square foot structure is not sighted on the property and would be the length of a football field, believes the owner plans to do a lay-down yard for his business and storage condos, the property has seen a dramatic increase in activity over the last six months, Mr. Bitten owns another property less than a quarter mile away that is used for commercial properties, a conditional use permit should be required so public input can be considered and conditions for approved cases be specified. I attached the correspondence we received, the minutes, and the original plans and then land use classification category table, you can determine what category it is and whether or not it needs a CUP. And that ends my staff report.
So, Sinda, this would be considered then an agricultural building?
Well, it'd be just a personal building. It's not, it's not an ag building, he's gonna store personal items in it, not agricultural implements.
No, but part of the agricultural definition is storage of equipment and products.
He has not requested an agricultural building. He's requesting just a storage building for his personal use. That's the difference between.
So it's not an egg, it's not an egg building?
It's not an ag building.
Hey, any more questions for Sinda, I know you guys probably.
Sinda, one of the questions that I have is on the plot, you and I have talked about the fact that I think that that lot in back of this property has been landlocked with no easement, did you address that at all to try and get an easement back to that piece of ground that has been?
To that piece?
To his neighbor.
Mike, it's up on the map.
Oh, Mike McLachlan, yeah.
How does he access that property?
Doesn't, I believe that that property is landlocked.
That piece right there.
There's a road down on the south edge here, goes to that white house.
Here, there's a road that goes down this way, he might have an easement, I don't know, there's a ditch that comes down between this property and Mr. Bitten's.
Is that a ditch or a canal? You know?
Drainage slough, I think.
Yeah.
On a canal? That's why it's so wet.
Yeah, very wet piece.
You know, he's been trying to do some drainage out there, curtain raining, things like that, he's had all the proper permits to do that work, so that's not what the issue is here.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I don't know how this gentleman gets his access.
Hey, any more questions for Sinda? If not, I will open up the public hearing and begin with the appellate.
Good.
Please ask, state your name for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Brian Okey with Valley County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, for the record, the appellate is Valley County, I'm representing the interests of Valley County here today. The purpose of the appeal isn't necessarily to overturn the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was a close decision, it was a three to two vote and I think the staff report has, has touched on all of the issues that, that really I wanted to, to visit. One is to give this particular board an opportunity to understand the application and what the issue is and make a determination based on what our codes require. A couple of issues that I think is, is important for us and I think we'll accomplish it here today is, is to ensure that we have an adequate record. Decisions like this can, the county can always with these decisions incur some liability, as long as we have an adequate record to support the basis for those decisions, then those are, those are much easier to defend, defend those decisions, particularly in this circumstance, as the staff report informed you BP Properties owns the property and not, not necessarily Mr. Bitten or Ms. Potter who are going to be using this for personal use, that is somewhat unique, typically, storage properties or storage buildings that are used for personal use are, it doesn't always have to be the case, but oftentimes it is owned by the individual, oftentimes associated with a residence that's associated with the property and none of those issues are, are present here. So I think it's incumbent upon Mr. Bitten and BP Properties to explain that to the board so we can make an adequate record to support whatever decision you make. I, I'm not here to, to tell you to, to vote one way or the other on this. There was some testimony during the planning and zoning hearing that potentially future use might be for commercial purposes and then they would come back later for a conditional use permit. That, that's problematic from the county's perspective, if the purpose of the property down in, in the future is for commercial purposes, once the building, the structure is built, appropriate conditions can't be put in place because the structures are, is already there, so if that's the purpose of the building, to use it, use it for a commercial purpose sometime down the line, I think it's important and important to have that dialogue and that discussion now. So, you know, without taking up any more time, I, I think I'll close my remarks and stand for any questions if you have any.
So Brian, we can legally ask who BP Properties are and find out who the actual owners are.
Sure, I mean, they're, they're here, they can explain that better than I can and certainly as you probe into that and ask questions, you're, you're building the record that I was, is really the reason that we're here today is to, is to build that record, so.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Brian, can we place conditions upon this, I mean, on an appeal like this, or do we just remand it back for other conditions?
That's a good question, thanks for bringing that up. Your options are you can remand it back to planning and zoning with specific instructions on how you want that handled or you can approve the decision of planning and zoning that no conditional. that no conditional use permit is required, or you can, under your own authority, basically reverse the decision of Planning and Zoning and require a conditional use permit. If a conditional use permit is the ultimate outcome, then it would have to come back for whatever conditions need to, need to be put in place that would, would be appropriate. But those are the three options that you have. Remand back to P&amp;Z, approve P&amp;Z's decision, or the question that's before you is whether a conditional use permit is required. We have not had any conversations about conditions of approval up to this point.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Quick question, Cindy. Is there anything in the ordinance that deals with size of buildings?
No.
Because I know, like, my hay barns are 100 by 80 or something like that, and that was just a $10 egg, right hay barn? Okay, so at this time, Dusty? Hmm? There's height limitation, yeah. So, Dusty, you're the applicant, you want to come on up? Please state your name for the record.
Sure. Dusty Bitten, 7 Boulder View Place, McCall, Idaho. So, we bought this property from Bob Goff, like we were talking about. Part of the whole plan for us is, Harlow's is splitting off the back half of their property too, so we're going to be looking at purchasing that and have more stuff to the north there with RMC. Our intent is not to use this as a lay-down yard for RMC with the neighbors up above there. At the moment, we currently don't have any other personal storage anywhere, so our intent is to build this building and use it for our own personal storage. And, you know, two separate things is, I understand the letter of the law with the conditional use permit, as I've owned lots of property in Valley County and City of McCall, and been through that, so I understand, you know, and I appreciate Brian picking up, you know, laying that out very clearly. I already knew that, but, you know, you can't rent it, can't sell it, can't have our trailers there, work trailers, can't be operating a business out of there, can't do any of those things. And I understand that all those things trigger a CUP, so that's why I emailed Cindy before I went any further with the plans and spent a bunch of money getting that done, is because, as I understand the intent of the law, where a CUP, as long as it's for your own personal use, I do not need a CUP to be able to get a permit and build that building and use it for my own personal use. The second I start having my own, my work stuff over there, pint-top branded trucks over there, RMC branded trucks over there, then that's a whole different story. So, I understand those, those conditions and, and what it takes to have a CUP or trigger a CUP or not have a CUP. I'm not going to lie to you, our intention down the road someday would be to do something with this property. We bought the property to do something with it, not to just have our own personal storage. So, I'm not going to sit up here and bullshit you about that, because I might be back up here asking for something different later. But, like I said, as it sits now, we're only going to use it for our personal storage, and we've got 12 hawks sitting right above us that are, I'm sure, going to make the phone call this end of the day that we don't, don't use it for our personal storage. So, you know, down the road, that would be something that we'd have to come back and go through a full-blown subdivision or conditional use permit or whatever we decide we want to do with it. So, we have done water mitigation, as a couple of the neighbors noted, it's super wet, so in years past, there's been groundwater at surface level for even throughout most of the summer. So, Crestline has helped us come up with a plan, and the Corps of Engineers, Army Corps of Engineers, and all that is getting monitored and recorded and data filled, so right now we couldn't even do anything other than where those buildings are currently, because it's all, can't really be touched until we have all that data and improve that we've established so that it's not a super wet area. So, those buildings right now are pretty much, I mean, you could use them to store some stuff in the summer. They're all humped up, frost-heaved, buildings are going up and down. I mean, I'd be scared to even put any of my stuff in there in fear that it would just collapse over. So, Bob always let other people put stuff in there, as a buddy-type favor thing, and, you know, that was his own risk, but I don't really feel comfortable putting my stuff in there, because any big windstorm or big snowstorm, I'm surprised I even haven't tipped over yet with the snow we've had, so. Yeah, that's our plan for the moment. Like I said, I don't, I can't tell you the future, what that means, what the economy's going to do, all those different things, what it looks like, but I know what it, what would trigger a CUP and what wouldn't trigger a CUP, so appreciate Brian bringing those notes up so that they can be recorded and know that we're all on the same page.
Dusty, where's the orientation of that building going to be on there?
It's right where those other buildings would be. I could provide a site plan if you wanted one, but it would be right where those existing buildings are.
All those coming down, all those buildings?
Yeah, so there's about 8,000 square foot of building there right now, in different shapes and forms and add-ons and pool barns and-
And then which ways your building going to go, north, south, or east-west?
East to west.
East-west?
Yep.
With the openings on the north side?
Yes, yep.
Tell me what you're going to store in this that's personal use, that you need that big of a building?
Boats, snowmobile trailers, razors.
Toys.
All kinds of stuff, yeah, toys.
I get that, but-
And the Potters have the, you know, they have the same amount of stuff that we have, so.
So, let's go into that a little, is Potter's like a partner with you on that?
Yeah, so they own, so me and Elise, my wife, own two-thirds of BP Properties, and then Carrie owns a third of BP Properties.
Carrie Potter.
Yep.
And do they have a lot of stuff too?
They got stuff, yeah.
This is my concern, by not doing a CUP right now. We lose the ability to do any kind of restrictions, including, so if you're citing your building for your personal use, it would be nice to know what's going to happen around it, because that does impact your neighbors.
Sure.
Secondly, you're on the state highway, and I have a thing, maybe these guys don't, but I do, about landscaping along the state highway, that you're going to screen some of this, this is going to be one long ugly building-
Sure.
-on our scenic byway.
Yep.
Tell me about that.
So, I'm not planning on doing any screening. Obviously, it's going east to west, so you won't see as much of it coming from the, from the building. I mean, obviously, I'm in business to be in business, so I have a plan of what, what it would be down the road. And, like I said, I'm not, honestly, the county, if you guys want to do those things, the county as a whole needs to close those loopholes.
We do.
Whether it's triggered by size, whether it's triggered by, you just don't like it, but as far as I can read, if it's for your personal use, there's no CUP required. But I agree with what you're saying, Sheri, I mean, there needs to be a master plan, and we have a master plan, but I'm not going to share that at the moment, because it's not pertaining to what we're trying to do.
The other thing that is important to realize too, Dusty, is the fact that the reason it was set up back in the 70s for the CUP process is to allow your neighbors to come in and ask for some of these conditions of approval.
Yep.
And I, and I think it's a good system.
Sure.
Because it keeps neighbors friendly, it keeps people from suing each other.
Oh, yeah.
Keeps it out of court. And I'm just wondering in my own mind if that shouldn't be the way this should be built as well.
Yeah.
So that you don't have to do this whenever you decide to develop the rest of it.
Sure.
It would be sad to go in there and say, well, you got to tear it down now.
Yeah.
That doesn't make any sense either.
Well, then I would just continue to use it for my personal use if it-
And then never develop the site?
I mean, I mean, at some point, you got to let people develop something. I mean, whether they're looking over that nice metal that they've had there for the past 20 years or whatever. I mean, it's too wet to do houses on, and they don't want a gas station there, so there's got to be something in the middle that works for everybody that's, you know, a good use of the property, and it's the flow of what's going up and down the road there, and what's across the road from it, and all those other things. You know, obviously, I know that they're not going to approve a gas station, because that didn't get approved, and I have no intent of putting a gas station there, or anything similar to that, that's high-traffic and high-noise and whatever else, so.
People don't like to see change around them, and it's just the way life is, but-
That it is.
I would have put a gas station there. I probably would have put one in that one.
Yeah, I mean, before, it would have been impossible, it's just nobody did any research, or Bob certainly didn't do anything on the water mitigation, it would have been way too wet and impossible to do anything.
I just question the size of the building for personal use.
Sure.
It is owned by a company. I would rather see you go through the process and actually give the neighbors a chance to put some mitigation on it.
Sure.
I mean, with the type of toys that you have, it'd be great to set up a motorcycle track out there.
Sure.
Well, the neighbors are not going to have any opportunity to say, I don't want a motorcycle track out there.
Well, my son's big into basketball, so I could make a full-size indoor basketball court in there for having extra, extra time in the winter, so.
And the rest of the school would love to part that.
Sure, exactly, yeah.
They would love to come and do those types of things.
Yep.
But that's not what we're hearing, so.
Yeah.
I think, you know, just an opportunity for the neighbors to comment, and actually to have a few restrictions placed upon it, I think is appropriate, that's-
What kind of restrictions, excuse me, you're thinking of?
I'm just, you know-
The screening?
No outside, I think screening, but I think no outside use of the property without, you know, some kind of time limitations put upon it. I don't know what the future use is, you know? We're putting one huge building, it's a huge building in the middle of this thing.
But, I mean, I agree to a point, but then, this year, I'll be putting, if I can afford it, two pool barns on my property, one on the south end, one on the north end. And for just me, I'm going to have seven bays, that I can put my trailer, my boat, four-wheelers, stuff underneath.
You're going to need a conditional use permit.
Obviously, I wasn't going to go to Cindy.
Depends for his business.
But, what I'm looking at is, we got two homeowners, Dusty and Carrie, and so they're getting six bays apiece. No different than what I'm doing, is just an individual, I'm going to have six bays on my place, doing the same thing. Just because the building's long, there's twelve bays, it doesn't seem to me it's not a big deal. Because I know the stuff that we accumulate, unfortunately, got to put it somewhere, and that's all they're, they're wanting to do. And I don't know if you've heard any pushback from any of the property owners around you?
Just the letters I read from the, in the staff report from the neighbors.
I would-
They just want more clarification, and I'm happy to call them and talk to them, or, you know.
I'm kind of coming from the same thing Neil has. I have seven barns on my place, and two of them are full of hay half the year, and the rest of the time, they're empty. And the biggest thing on those is the wind. The wind has shifted those barns around so much that they're kind of loose-jointed. But there is a certain right to be able to develop your property how you do it.
Sure.
I think that's an important right that we need to protect here. My thinking is that, you know who's going to be there. My concern is that you've stated that there's going to be, if you can get the ground behind Harlow's bus stop, that you can put all that together into one big, and that kind of scares me. Because that tells me you do have a plan down the road, somebody to develop this personally. I think the wet ground is going to stop a lot of what you're trying to do there.
But he's already draining the ground, though.
That's a low place, and there's not a lot of places to go with that water. But I think we've kind of figured out who, who's going to be able to use it.
Sure.
If you can't do commercial on it, and if you do, then you're in violation of the deal, and you'll be asked to come back in and get a CUP, and then it's going to get ugly. And so I just wish we could do that upfront.
Sure.
Save all that angst later on, but if you want to proceed this way, I think we have to honor that right.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't know if I'm going to end up putting the back of Harlow's or not, I mean, it's going to go to the highest bidder, so who knows who that's, who that's going to be, and then there's a lot of hurdles between here and there, because our properties don't even touch the way that they did the, did the land split that they're going to do back there, so there's other hurdles to cross now, thing as well.
What I'm looking at, is that a pond up there on the right in the middle, is that a storage pond?
Is that gyms? Yeah, that's, uh-
So, is that overflow every year, and that's why you're getting that water?
Uh, just from the ditch runoff, and I think that whole area is just super wet, and it's got a clay layer in it that keeps all the moisture in it, so that's mainly what, mainly what keeps it, keeps it wet. Yeah, that top half of Harlow's is super wet too. It's probably wetter than what we have, as you can see from the picture.
Yep, yep.
So.
Might pay you to pipe some of that water through there.
Yeah, continue it on. We're putting it back in the ditch right now, on the south end of the property. Yeah, it's-
I believe in property rights also, but our code is that if you're going to be using it for business purposes, which I really truly think you probably are, and not-
Not currently. I mean, like I said, we've got 12 hawks up there, and I've been, I've been down in Donley, I've been in McCall, I've been multiple places, and trust me, neighbors are not afraid to pick up the phone and call Cindy, and then the next thing I get is a phone call from Cindy saying, here's what you're doing, here's what we saw. Everybody has one of these these days, so a picture and a video and whatever else is not hard to obtain. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, if I'm going to, if I'm going to go through a CUP process, then I'm just going to, if I'm going to get beat up by all the neighbors one time, I'm just going to go for the whole thing versus doing it twice.
And that, you know, when I'm looking at this personal use, so you've got 12 garage doors, you've got 12 man doors right beside them, those are all going to be split separately.
Could be. I'm not going to split them separately. I have no reason to walk in one door and out the other, but I don't want to walk 50 feet if I know my snowmobile trailer's in bay number one, I want to go walk in that man door, open bay number one, pull my snowmobile trailer out, I know my jet boat's in bay number four, I'm going to walk down to bay number four, open the man door, walk into bay number four, pull my jet boat out, or walk in between them, or jockey things around, or whatever the case is.
It feels like for commercial use, not personal use, but-
Well, it's a very nice personal use, I can say that, I wish I could.
Me too.
Yeah.
It's just not a garage shop.
Yeah.
Hey?
Friends, family.
Yep, because that, if you have your friends and family down there, then you got to have a CUP, from what I understand. So, it's not to be used by other people.
And I want you to realize that's on the record.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's no different than any other piece of property we've had. We've asked Cindy, hey, can I park a work trailer there? Nope, can't do it without a CUP, you know, you own the piece of property, but if you're going to use it for work, or friends, or family, or rent out, no, you got a buddy who wants to park his RV there, if it's not in our name, it's not allowed, so.
Okay. Any more questions for, for Dusty? No, we're going to move through the public hearing and get through this.
Okay.
This time, I'm opening up for testimony, journey, and public that want to comment. For the record, show there's none. Any testimony proponents of this appeal? For the record, show there was none. Testimony uncommitted? Same thing, Doug. Testimony of opponents in the appeal? So, is there any rebuttal that wants to be done by the appellant or the applicant?
Let's say a couple of things. I think, I think that it's important for the record to show that the size, the size of the structure is not the issue. Mr. Bitten is correct that there is no ordinance in Valley County code that would limit the size of a particular building, but also suggested that maybe that policy needs to be considered by the board for future applications, but we're here to apply current Valley County code. And the only other thing I would want to say on the record is that this approach, given the fact there's testimony both in front of planning and zoning here today, that the future use of this property does have a commercial goal, or a commercial purpose, just not a defined one yet, is a strategic risk on behalf of the applicant, that there is no entitlement to a future conditional use permit if this is to be converted as a, as a commercial use in the future. So, if, if Mr. Bitten and his business partner are willing to take that strategic risk, I have, I have no objection to that, so long as everybody proceeds forward that the, that application could have the potential being denied in the future and can be limited only to personal use going forward. So, with that, I'll stand for questions or sit down and let you finish things up.
I don't think I have any questions. I think he understands that pretty well.
Yep.
Cindy, I did have one question, because I can't see it on my schematic, but how tall is the front of this building? The numbers are really-
It will have to be-
Fuzzy, and I can't see what the total height-
35 feet or less.
And it's not 35 feet? You know what it is, Dusty? I can't read the number, it's all fuzzy.
It's just going to shed to the back, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. It probably wouldn't be 20 feet to the top of it, 22 feet.
I think it, if I'm looking at it right, is 25, 4, but I could be wrong.
Can you read anything?
That'd probably be close. Be able to go back 50 feet.
Well, he's under the, the limit.
It's like 23, 24.
Yep, 23, 24, somewhere in there, whatever it takes.
It looks like 24, if I add those-
I can't see it, they're too fuzzy on my-
Yeah.
It's like 24 on the front.
Is there anything else you want to add, Dusty?
Nope.
Doug, I'm going to close the public hearing at 11:32 and bring you back for deliberation. What's your pleasure?
I'm good with, uh, I'm good with the, upon the appeal, and what P&amp;Z commission showed Showed us that it's not a CUP process, that it's just building permits needed.
Your turn or mine?
What do you want? I'm still deciding.
You're still deciding? As I stated in my original argument, that there are certain rights you have as a property owner to build what you want to do, and I think Dusty understands that if this is ever converted to a commercial use, it may end up being torn down and moved or changed due to whatever the process, the CUP process throws forward, and just as long as he knows that, it's restricted to private use only, not for him and his partner, not for anybody else, and it's not for commercial use. That's all in the record, we have that, so if there's violations, that will be handled down the road. And I think that it's permitted as a private landowner use.
And I just think that this sets precedence in other sections of the county, which concerns me, because I think if you have private use, you own the ground privately, and you're building a garage or shop on it, and it's not used by a, it doesn't have a commercial ownership, and that's concerning to me.
So you're saying that BP Properties is not, is a commercial owner, not a private owner?
That's correct.
And I think that's probably the weakest part of his argument, is that, that's one thing that's kind of going around in my brain, too, is if it was his name, I would feel differently.
If Dusty owned this and he wants to go build a shop on it, so be it. That's commercial, or that's private use. But this is a commercial business, commercial application that owns other commercial property around there. We all know that this is going to go to commercial use. You're not going to use this type of a property and use it for personal use for very long. We're going to see this application back, and now there's already something that's constructed there. And so I believe in private property rights issues. If this was Dusty's property, I don't think there'd be any problem at all, but it's not. It is owned by a corporation, and therefore it makes it a different use than just a personal use.
But is it a family-held corporation, Dusty?
It's not.
Just the two of you? I'm a corporation, too, but it's a family-held corporation. I don't think that carries a lot of weight with it.
Well, and you're ag, right? Does that make a difference? Because you're applying for ad buildings.
Well, yeah, I'm ag, and he's not.
Yeah.
But he could... And you and your partner are sole owners of this? Or is there other owners?
BP Properties is separate from RMC. Yeah, so just, I can get that.
Did you say that again? I didn't hear that.
BP Properties, this him and Carrie, they're not part of RMC. RMC is a separate corporation.
Right. Okay, so we got a...
It doesn't even have a separate mailing.
I'd like to make a motion that we uphold the P&amp;Z Commission's decision that they do not need a CUP.
I'm going to second that motion. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
For the record, Doug, you get that?
Yes, sir.
So the motion is approved. All right? Thank you, everyone, have a great day.
Can I park my boat in the back of that last?